Voice stuff. So today's date is December 3rd, 2024. The time is 10:00 a.m. And this is the Commissioner Status Update Meeting. In attendance are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Matarri. And are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Seeing Jonathan? No. Hearing none. Let's go into business. The first item is the Justice Building Update. It's a discussion with David Mendez.
Good morning. David Mendez with Turner and Townsend Heary. An update on, I've given you a updated cost sheet. I know I have not given you that for a couple of meetings, but no real changes to it. I'll just draw your attention to, we've been doing what we call a box walk on the building. So we did, if you look at item number 23 of the first page, it says Level 3 Box Walk and Power and Cable Modifications. So what happens there is we walk with the departments, department heads, walk the different floors, and make sure that their data and power are in the correct location for their usage, and there's some minor changes that are made there. So on the third floor, they made some minor changes that ended up in $3,500 in added cost. If you look down to item number 30, that's the Level 1 and 2 Floor Box Adjustments. I had given that a placeholder of $10,000, and it's, there were virtually no changes made. So we probably won't have much, much there. Let's see. If you'll look on the bottom line on this, please don't look at that number because I haven't verified it yet. I added the contract that you approved for electronics, cameras, and building access control of $312,000. I didn't double check that to make sure it didn't add into the, into the overall total. So you've got an FFNE budget of, of $1,058,000, and that 312 is part of that. So I think I might have added that in twice. So, so don't look at that bottom line number. The important items overall to look at is, if you look at the total of the contingency usage, we've used 386,000 of the design contingency, leaving, that's, that's 44% of the total. So that's leaving us $495,000 in that category. In the contractor's contingency, we're up to using 384,000. That leaves 435,000 or 47% usage of that contingency.
David, do those numbers of usage include the things that we think are going to happen as well?
That we've what?
That we think are going to happen, the ROMs.
Well, so the ones in yellow that you'll see, those are my rough order of magnitude or ROM numbers that haven't been nailed down yet. And yes, that comes into that total. So that's why I wanted to, to keep those, those totals. If you'd like, I can keep, give you a second category of subtotal, and that would be what's been approved to date and what's still.
No, as long as that number includes the ROM, I'm good.
It is.
Okay.
Or it does. This, later today, we're meeting with, starting with the different departments with their, with the second meeting for furniture. And that will, that's the discovery, discovery part of the meeting. So you won't see any budget numbers come for, oh, probably another month yet before I'll have final numbers to go over with you on, on furnishings. So the discovery is, we'll look at the plan, we'll look at the furniture layouts, what we're anticipating for furniture, and make modifications, and start to talk about what kind of furniture we're going to have in those, in those offices. So I, I guess I'm looking to you a little bit on direction as, as we move through that about, you know, I'll estimate where we're, where we think we're at, if, if we're using the right level of quality for the building. I'll touch bases with you again as we move through that, that discussion. So this is the, the first real meeting, talking about what actual furnishings are going to be in those rooms. And I'll try to get you an updated ROM as to what that would be. So that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Okay. On to our next item, number two, Policy for Future Easement Request. This is a discussion. I have Commissioner Duncan.
So it's, I think Nick is, has more of a voice to lead us this morning. But yeah.
And you're referring to Director Snyder's document that he gave us? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. So I'm not sure how to quite start. There's, there have been several requests for easements lately, and the Commissioners have been dealing with, and of course, legal, community development, all of us. And so there was discussion individually with Commissioners that I had, along with some discussions with community development, specifically David Callahan, about, you know, what does the future look like? And, and what should be the parameters for these requests be? And should there be a policy? Should there be a form? And so what does that look like? Whether by easement, or even MOUs, we talked about. So you'll have to forgive penmanship and spacing and all those things. I cranked out a very quick document last Friday and sent it to the board, so we would have some time to discuss it today. And essentially, Commissioners, if you had a chance to look at it, it was just sort of an à la carte of individual questions that the Board could use for request forms, potentially integrating into agreements, or however you may decide to use it, because these requests are becoming more frequent. And there is cause for concern, I know amongst individual Commissioners, and certainly the community, about what these recreational trails, or maybe they're open space properties the county owns, and what those are going to look like, and how they're affected by these requests, and how these requests should, should come forward. We used to get one maybe once every few years, and now we're getting several years. So the climate's changed a little bit, and that was sort of the genesis of both our discussions and, and that document that I put forward, which again, is just sort of an à la carte of some Q and A, or some requirements the Board might want to see moving forward. And I'm not speaking on behalf of community development or legal, but they, I'm assuming they have similar frustrations from time to time whereby these requests come in, and we're just not sure who's on first. And where they originated, and who's handling it, and is the Board fully apprised of all, all of the information? And there's a lot of moving parts. As, as this Board's aware, National Park Service may be involved, maybe it's a joint powers on the Centennial Trail, maybe it's a parcel that we're about ready to consider granting easement, but do we have clear title? All these things, and I think it's frustrating for all of us as an organization about how these things come forward and how they're processed. And maybe there's a better way. And that's kind of the genesis of this, this discussion. So with that, I leave it to the Board to marinate on some of those questions, and give some thought on how we might proceed in the future.
Well, I have some thoughts, unless you all would like to start first. No. I think it's an excellent start. And I think that we are being asked as a Board to give up some form of a property right to property that the county controls, to individuals or corporations. And I think having a, a system in place that answers questions, primarily the, the larger question, I think, is how does it benefit the citizens of Kootenay County? And, and then have some more granular questions, you know, embedded in there, depending on the situation. So I think what you've put together is a fantastic start. And I think that, you know, from the Board's perspective, we, you know, the next step is to ask that we provide direction to the community development to incorporate this into a policy, so that when these things happen in the future, there's a system in place so that when it affects your department, you're involved in the beginning, that questions can be answered by the applicant? Because if those questions can't be answered satisfactorily, why are we getting staff involved in incurring this expense? Things like that. So I think that, fine job. Good start.
I think my problem is, I hate to hand this to somebody who makes that request, but I want to know the answer to every bullet point. So for me, I think a policy and a procedure would be fantastic. It's just, how do we pare this down? Or maybe we don't? If you want an easement, you must check off 7,500 boxes.
Yeah, I think it really comes down to, if you can answer yes or no, depending for some of the major questions, then you get into more granular, granular questions. But if, but if we can't answer how it's going to benefit the citizens of Kootenay County, then I would argue, why continue?
Okay. So if community development would be willing to go through this list and maybe pull out the half to halves, and I'll do the same, and then do that tree, it's a decision tree.
Largely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
Any other comments?
Well, I think the only thing that I'm going to make sure happens is that we have a level playing field for all citizens, and we all play by the same rules. I'm not convinced we've done that, so.
And I think this will largely help that situation.
Pardon?
This will help that situation.
I hope so.
It'll formalize it. Unless there's anything else to be said, I think we can move on to the next item. Number three, Easement Agreement. Rose of Sharon Enterprises, Inc. Discussion. And we have Ben Tarbutton here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Ben Tarbutton for the record. So this is take two on this one. We brought it before you a couple weeks ago, or actually, it was a week ago. And is now before you again. We did prepare a PowerPoint presentation for you, so I'd be happy to kind of go through that with you. But as a reminder, this is a request for an easement over a portion of the Centennial Trail that is owned and managed by the county. The, the property that you can see here in the brown is not up to date, but that shows that it's currently zoned in the county's high-density residential zoning. It has been annexed into the city of Post Falls. The city of Post Falls has reviewed, and to my understanding, given preliminary approval for a 55-lot subdivision, which main access is to come here off of McGuire Road. But in order to approve the subdivision, a secondary means of access was required. And this is kind of the proposed location of that secondary access. The owners of these two properties also own this piece here, which in theory would provide access over the Centennial Trail through this property and connecting to Lundie Boulevard. So the, the request again is for a, an easement for access through the Centennial Trail. The request has been reviewed by Pat Braden, has been reviewed by Director Nick Snyder, and also the city has reviewed it as well. And, and everybody is in support of the request, and is here before you. I also have some other slides, if you'd prefer. And this is kind of a 3D image showing that location again on that side, and kind of the road infrastructure that's currently in place. Here is the proposed preliminary design of the subdivision. This is the west half of those 55 lots coming here off of McGuire Road, and then the east half, then, and also extending over the Centennial Trail and connecting to Lundie Boulevard. And this is part of the agreement that there would be appropriate signage for oncoming traffic, including those on the trail or using the vehicular road. So that would be, I think, the end of my presentation there, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
No questions.
I have thoughts.
Why don't you go ahead, and I'll, I'll save mine after yours.
I'm against back and forth traffic. I, I think it's really bad on that section of the trail. I understand it's gated. My preference would be for emergency access only. If the city cannot live with that, then I would say exit only. So emergency vehicles can come enter through there, but neighborhood people can only exit through there.
So kind of like a one-way exit only?
Yeah. But I, I think that's too much traffic. I think that's unfair to the trail users, and it doesn't benefit the county. So, my thoughts.
Yeah. You mentioned, Ben, that everyone is in agreement that we should be doing this. How does this benefit the citizens by giving an easement across a trail that is meant so that people can avoid being on the roads?
Well, certainly by having an intersection does complicate things there. However, I think the benefit that it does provide for the public is that they are going to be providing a path that connects the Centennial Trail to Lundie Boulevard, that would provide access to a nearby Vista Wave Park. So it is going to provide an additional access point for the park system. But that's my understanding.
And that access is through, so that they can ride their bike through this new neighborhood, in essence?
Let's see, let's move back here. So my understanding again is that this would provide an, kind of an off-ramp point, or an on-ramp point to the trail that would connect to Lundie Boulevard, and then use, be able to service a Vista Wave Park from there. Or if they wanted to jump on the, from Lundie Boulevard 2, that could be an option. This may, I don't have the park on this slide here, but maybe Director Snyder could add to that if.
What would be the negative consequences of not granting easement there?
The negative consequences would probably be with the proposed subdivision. I don't believe, and this is more of a city's requirement, but I don't believe that the city would approve the subdivision should access for secondary access be approved. This is, to my understanding, the only location that they have available for, for secondary means of access. My slides are not working. There we go. So this is their, their only means of secondary access that they can propose. So the negative consequences would be a denial of the subdivision, I suppose.
Is it possible to find out from the city before 2 o'clock this afternoon if an exit-only proposal, an emergency access ingress and egress?
Yeah, I will make every effort to do so. I reached out to them last week, but haven't heard back from them, probably because of the holiday. But I will follow up with them again after the meeting here.
And what about maintenance? Who's going to be responsible for these cars going over the trail?
And so in checking with Pat Braden, he suggested that long-term maintenance be handled the same way that any other intersection on the trail is handled. And I believe that's more of a, a joint powers agreement. And I'm not exactly sure, maybe, maybe Director Snyder could chime in on that as well, of, of how and who is responsible for those current intersections. And then this one would kind of follow the same line.
Nick Snyder again for the record. According to joint powers, each jurisdiction is responsible for maintenance within their own area. This is clearly county, so the county would be responsible for maintenance in that area.
But we would, I mean, the trail's not built for cars to go over it, so it would have to be kind of built to handle that kind of traffic. And I would assume trucks as well, right? That this isn't going to be light vehicles, I mean, it won't be 18-wheelers.
Fire engines?
Fire engines.
Heavy.
Yeah. I think there's so many questions here that, you know, to say yes today, and then we'll figure it out afterwards. I don't understand why we're being presented with this. And frankly, I think, you know, part of these questions, if they were asked beforehand, and we had good answers, it would help with this. But I'm very leery to give up something like a bike path, so that someone can profit off of development, and then have cars go over that bike path, and then make it a, a new hazard for bikers, without us really understanding what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, you know, to whom, or for whose benefit are we giving this to? You know, just because there's access to another park is just a little less bike riding, but I thought the point of riding your bike is for exercise. So you're just going down a couple blocks to turn around and come back. And so I'm just trying to understand what exactly this benefit is, and why, you know, this is something that everyone is in agreement with. I mean, I understand why the builder would want this, and we certainly should give consideration to it. But we are constituents. We have to also be able to explain this to.
Yeah, going back to your question about the construction of the trail, I mean, it is part of the easement agreement that the road would be constructed by the applicant, or the grantee in this case, to handle the traffic associated with, with road traffic. So they would be responsible for at least constructing the road to that standard, and meeting the Post Falls Highway District standards, excuse me, the Post Falls, the city of Post Falls standards.
Yeah.
So, but, but.
But the maintenance is the expensive part, too, and that's not defined. So, okay.
Maybe I could follow up with a question. In scenarios such as these, and kind of going back maybe to the last question that we're having about a policy, how would you feel about the app, like the, the requister, whoever is making the request, be a part of this discussion? They could certainly fill out a questionnaire of sorts, but some of the questions, they may need additional time to respond, or, or questions that you may have, and which they could, could add on to. Is that somebody, or, you know, that you would prefer to have part of these discussions?
Well, I think in some way, shape, or form, yes. Because you're the one now doing the presentation on behalf of the developer, and we're asking you these questions, and, you know, you're being put in this position of trying to, your fiduciary now becomes, how do I answer on the, for the benefit of the developer?
Exactly.
When the reality is that your department is operating under the policies that the Board has set. So, you know, I would say yes.
Okay. Well, if it pleases the Board, then I will also reach out to the applicant to see if they are also able to make the 2 o'clock meeting, and would be willing to add in any comments, should you have any questions for them, too?
I mean, if you think you can get the answers to a lot of these questions before 2, but even then, I'm still leery of us being in a situation where we're being said things that are not in writing, to induce us to say yes, and then all of a sudden afterwards, the devil's in the details, well, we're not going to agree to pay for that, or, you know, some periodic maintenance, or, you know, other factors.
So I don't think that this is time-sensitive. Has it become time-sensitive?
I don't know the sensitivity of the timing here. So again, as I reach out to the city, I hopefully get that information from them.
Perfect. That, that would be helpful. And so pending answers from the city, we'll leave it on. But you'll get back to us before 2 or at 2, and then we'll know if we need to have the discussion, or if we can pull it, and then discuss later.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe you could just follow up. Is the rest of the Board's preference that they would potentially be in favor of a one, a one-way exit only, or are we still, not enough information to determine?
I haven't even really thought about that. I mean, it's certainly an idea. The way it was presented initially was that it was for emergency services only. It was going to be a gate, and then that turned out to not be the case at all. So my concern is that I'd really like to be able to see it, look at it, and digest it for a little bit before saying yes. Because depending on the situation, I mean, this, I definitely want Director Snyder's thoughts on it. And without having something to look at, I don't think it's fair to ask him his thoughts on, on this. And did you have a comment you want to make?
Yeah, I, I have had an opportunity to comment, Commissioners, and I was in favor, well, my, my first reaction is no crossings is best. That said, so we are not holding up community development and Commissioners, my, my thought on it was emergency gated, whereby if a fire truck or police had to enter ingress or egress, they would have a locked key system, a lockbox, just like they have on many things. And that sort of solves that traffic. In defense of community development, this is a perfect example of why this policy is so necessary, is that Ben and his team are here answering questions, quite frankly, they shouldn't have to answer. They're trying to do the work of a requesting party, and it puts them in a very difficult position, as well as Parks and Waterways, to your point. One thought the Board might, if it's not time-sensitive, is to potentially bring this before the Joint Powers Maintenance Committee, which is comprised of the city of Coeur d'Alene, the city of Post Falls, the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation, of course, the county, to give the county Commissioners an official position on it. It is also funded, and, and the general oversight of the trail is handled by the Joint Powers Board, which is comprised of, in this case, Chair Duncan, Mayor, and the new mayor, Woody McEvers, and Mayor Jacobson, and maybe they have some thoughts. I, I don't know, Commissioners, but if you would like more information, it's not time-sensitive. I would certainly be willing to take this in front of the North Idaho Centennial Trail Foundation for their recommendation. And they are now a financial contributor to joint powers, and the $25,000 a year, so they're a partner, and, and maybe they have some thoughts on, on how we should proceed on these kinds of requests. And I do think it's something that could happen quickly, so we're not holding up the applicant. So, but I did want to be clear that I have had an opportunity to comment, and I think community development has done a very good job trying to volley this back and forth, when it's really not their responsibility, at least in, in my opinion, so.
Commissioner, if I may interject, please. Deputy Director Davidson for Community Development. Thank you, Nick, for the work you've done on this, and Pat. I think there are so many unknowns here. A big factor is a safety factor, of which we know two-way traffic would, you know, impede the trafficway for the pedestrians and the recreational community. We don't know how this is going to benefit our citizens, number one. It's going to be a significant impact on the trail for recreation, those kinds of things, along with the other questions that Nick has come up with. I, I think it's a bit premature for an action item in this. I think we deserve some answers to provide for you, to be able to allow a best-suited decision in this project. My recommendation would be until we fulfill some of the elements of the list created, as well as some of the safety factors and the mitigation factors with the development community, that extreme discernment be made for an action item.
Sounds like we pull this afternoon's item.
I'm okay with it. I think that anything that is going to provide ease, an easement over a recreational trail, you know, we should be putting the brakes on it and really making sure it's a good decision. This isn't, should never be driven by, you know, for the economic benefit of a private corporation, without us understanding exactly what we're doing.
Well, I will then continue to reach out to the city to see what kind of time restraints we have here, or constraints, and, and then follow up with you before 2 o'clock, if I can, to let you know. Otherwise, we'll just have to address it at the 2 o'clock and pull it from the agenda if need be.
Fair enough. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
No? Okay. Item number four, Request for Lease Due to Encroachment on Centennial Trail. Speaking of that, Landberg and Parks and Waterways. Director Snyder?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Nick Snyder for the record. You might recall on November 13th, I sent the Board an email so they could review this, this encroachment. And the backstory on this, Commissioners, is in 2000, please don't hold me to this exact year. Years are flying by. I think 2017, I worked with our county surveyor, Rod Jones.
Excuse me.
And counsel for Parks and Waterways, Ms. Jamila Holmes. And Rod did an exceptional job surveying the trail, looking for encroachments based on my request, and put a lot of time and effort into it. And that, the, the end result was that we sent out some letters to some property owners, saying, hey, you're encroached. And it's important for the Board to know that this situation's quite a bit different than some of the others we've talked about this morning. The Centennial Trail's a little over 30 years old, and some of these encroachments preceded the trail, so whereby if there was a corner of a building, or a driveway in this case... the trail, so whereby if there was a corner of a building or a driveway in this case, it was probably there or could likely, could have been there before the trail was established. So that's important to know, that some of these situations aren't new, and whereby a property owner just said, hey, I'm going to build right here. It may have already been there when it was a railroad, and, well, here we are today. That said, the Landburg family reached out to me on November 4th and requested an easement because their driveway and their pole barn, or at least a corner of their pole barn, is encroached in the right-of-way of that trail. And so have you had an opportunity to look at the encroachment itself, Commissioners? Very well, so you're familiar with what we're talking about. So with that said, they asked for some guidance on how to move forward. I said, I will facilitate the process, and here we are today, and this is the first encroachment agreement. I want to be clear about what we're talking about. This is not a recorded encroachment in terms of it follows the property in perpetuity or gives permanent easement. What Jamila advises, to which I agree, is that it's an agreement to say, we understand essentially that you're there, that this encroachment exists, so they can sell their property. It would follow the property, and you're not allowed to rebuild, you're not allowed to do other kinds of encroachments. It's simply acknowledging, yes, it's there, and the county will, quote, "allow it," so you can sell your property. But it doesn't necessarily allow them to do additional encroachments or rebuild what they already have there. So, and that's an important distinction. So this family has came forward saying, hey, we recognize this is there, we'd like to sell the property, but we can't do that because we have an encroachment, and that's the crux of it.
And so just a huge point for people who may not be fully aware of it, this is not crossing the trail. This isn't the right-of-way of the trail. It's not actually inhibiting the trail whatsoever. It just happens to be in that right-of-way.
You are spot-on, Commissioner. This is at least 50 to 60 feet away from the trail, on the south side of the trail, and does not impede or otherwise negatively affect recreation for the public. It is, just happens to be where their pole building and their driveway landed, probably before the trail was ever constructed.
And that was basically an encroachment on the railroad property that we inherited, in essence, when we took over and made it the Centennial Trail. The only thing that stood out to me, and it really comes down to what the board wants to do, which is, what is the ultimate goal that we are trying to achieve? Are we trying to give property owners this encroachment agreement in perpetuity, or do we ultimately want their buildings, their driveways, to be on their property and not on the Centennial Trail? I would argue that in order to clean things up in the county, we should want to, at some point into the future, have these things cleaned up, and so they're no longer issues, because we'll just be dealing with them in perpetuity. So we should put maybe an expiration date on this that says, this is good until this date, and I'm not saying like five years, I'm saying like 25, 30, even 40 years, where it's well-known, it's established, that when this structure can't be repaired, that they take it down and rebuild in a different location.
I think this agreement in particular addresses that.
It does, and I'm happy to revisit it, have a discussion with Jamila to make sure that what we're talking about is clearly memorialized. Some of the challenge in this case, Commissioner, if you would look at that photograph, is where their driveway comes in, and their building was built to come in off that road and enter their driveway, so some things, that could be many, 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 many years before that house would have to be reconstructed and then aligned correctly with the ingress and egress from the road. So I agree, Commissioner, that if we're going to do this, in some cases, it should extend out probably 40-ish years to allow that to happen.
Yeah, I see that we can cancel it with 90 days, but we should be, as a board, saying, by this date into the future, whether it's 2060, whatever, all of these issues should expire and be done, as opposed to 30 years on this one, 40 years on that one.
I think the only consideration is if the building existed prior to the trail, and now you're telling somebody they have to tear it down within 40 years because we put a number on it. I think that's where I'm more comfortable saying, when repair is done, and community development can easily tag this, then it has to be outside of the encroachment. You must remove everything in the encroachment, or you don't get your permit for the repair.
I'm just wondering if you could say that in a little different way, because I guess I'm trying to figure out if someone wants to do a repair on this building, for example, part of it is encroached on the trail property, would they be allowed to do repairs on the building that's on their property, that portion of the building, and not on the portion that is on the trail? That's why I'm just thinking, give it an expiration date into the future and say, you've got 40 years to fix this. No one's going to care about that today, but as time goes by, they'll recognize it has to be done, because we're going to get into the, well, I want to fix the roof, but you're telling me I can't fix the part of the roof that's over the trail?
Right. So, I mean, it's not, there's not one-size-fits-all.
Well, no, and that's why I ask, what's the objective of the board? What are we trying to accomplish? If we want to clean this up, then we should give it an expiration date. If we want to make it something that goes on in perpetuity, which it's, the board can do that, it's just, then we're going to deal with these on a piecemeal basis.
I don't know that we are. You think that more encroachments are going to come forward from what the surveyor has brought forward?
Potentially. I think when these properties, and I spoke with the surveyor about this, and again, legal counsel years ago when we addressed this, is these will come forward as, hey, I want to sell, I want a new permit to do improvements, and then they're going to realize, oh, boy, I'm on the trail, or I'm otherwise encroached in this right-of-way, and we're going to have to either address it now, not do the improvement, whatever. So the answer is yes. I think they're going to come forward, Commissioner, in years to come. So at least having some parameters makes sense. And I'm happy if it's a benefit to the board to have a discussion with Jamila about some different tools in the document that maybe the commissioners can contemplate. We don't have to do this today. It's not time-sensitive. I've spoke with the Landburg family, great people, and I explained that there are some cogs in the wheel that, and some time to go through this process, and they're understanding. So if it's helpful, again, I'm happy to have Jamila maybe put some additional language in here for you to review.
I think it just comes down to us deciding, what do we want to accomplish? I mean, clearly, the property owners want to sell their property, so getting this easement or encroachment will allow them to do that, but what do we want to ultimately happen in the future as a board, and hopefully, you know, set some sort of precedent that other boards will follow?
I don't want to cause people to tear down something that's useful.
I agree with you. The question is, at some point, they're going to have to repair it, and so what do we just say, that no, you can't repair it, because eventually you'll have to tear it down?
I mean, yeah.
I mean, whatever it ends, whatever it ends up being is fine, just what do we want to, what problem are we trying to solve? And it sounds like what we're trying to solve is addressing these encroachments, and then where do we want them to be? It seems like to me, at some point in the future, whatever it is, we shouldn't have these structures on the property at some point in the future, wherever that is, you know, to be determined.
Okay.
So we'll have another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioners, so I'm clear, you're looking for some tools with a sunset date, it sounds like, to move the encroachment or otherwise deal with that encroachment, whatever that may be. And I did see that Jamila has put some language in here that addresses not being able to rebuild or replace, et cetera, but let me visit with her, maybe I can even have her take a look at your comments here on the video later today, and bring something back for you to take a look at in status.
I think, yeah, there's got to be a way where we can accommodate what Commissioner Duncan is talking about, and we can have a discussion, and maybe, you know, we'll come up with some ideas that really make sense.
I'll get it done.
All right. Thank you. Next up, item five, human resources agreement with Regents. And CK Kirkpatrick with HR.
Good morning. This is CK. I'm here with Scott Burkhardt from Alliant. We're here to talk about the agreements with Regents. We have several agreements before you. We were recommended by Legal to present this in executive session.
Okay. Any questions, or I'll make a motion?
Well, do we want to do public comment first beforehand? So why don't we do a public comment first, and then we can move into executive session. Ryan, did you want to come up?
Ron Hartman for the record. This is with regards to the discussion on the Rose Sharon easement. First question is, has anybody gotten with the fire department that that's what they'd use for their entrance, or are they going to use the main one? What's the fire department think? Nobody's answered that. The other one, this trail is one of the jewels of the county in this part of the state, and this gets back to what was discussed first on all these questions you do. How does this benefit the county? One of the reasons for the trail is safety, that you can let your children ride on there where there is no traffic. I don't see how this benefits the community at all. I think you're sacrificing safety of the community for growth, and here's a perfect example to slow down growth, because you've got a real good reason. And at the very most, would be emergency only if that's the one that the fire department would use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and take a motion.
All right. I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061D.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Mattar?
Aye.
Aye.